For Universal Coating. Sorry, I'm not used to reporting for the online. All right, perfect. So as you can see, we have a bunch of Michigan Department of Environment, Radiations and Energy folks here. We'll get to those guys in just a minute. Introduce myself. I'm Jennifer Dixon. I am the Planning Policy Coordinator with our Air Quality Division. So tonight I'm going to have two roles. I'm going to be the moderator of the beginning session, the informational session, and then I will be the Hearing Officer for the second part. So we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. But I want to talk about how things are going to work tonight because we have two. I see we have more people coming in, so I'll go really slow right now to kind of ease everybody in. So we will have these kind of two portions tonight. The beginning of the night, we're going to start with an informational session where Nick and Matt are going to be talking to you a little bit about what the Air Quality Division does, what our role is, how we look at air permits, how we do inspections and stack testing and things like that. So we'll give you some background, and then we'll talk about this specific application that we have in front of you tonight. And then the second part of the night, so then we'll go to the question and answer. So that's where we'll get questions from you guys. We'll get some questions hopefully from the audience online. We'll be able to have our panelists respond to those questions and hopefully give you some more information about what we're here to talk about tonight. And then after we get done with that, we're going to take a little bit of a break, like five minutes or something. Get up, stretch your legs, use the restroom, whatever you need to do. We'll come back and we'll start the official hearing portion. So during the hearing portion, we're going to have our decision maker in that. She'll introduce herself in a minute and myself. And we'll be hearing from you, but we won't be responding to you if you have questions during that portion or something. That's just to take those comments for the record. So question and answer and information, and then we'll stop, take a little pause, and we'll get into the hearing part. So we want to make sure we're getting questions answered before you feel like you need to make a comment. So we'll talk a little bit more about that, but just kind of want to set the stage. So another way we want to set the stage is, and we can thank our, some of our Flint Coalition members for helping us develop these group norms. And this is just a way for us to have a nice conversation tonight. Hopefully, we want to make sure that we are all, including us Eagle folks, kind of listening actively, making sure that we're trying to understand what's going on. If you guys have questions, we want to make sure we're clarifying. And we want to make sure that we're criticizing ideas in our heads and not necessarily individuals that are here with us tonight or maybe that are online. Everybody has different levels of understanding of this, so we're here to make sure that we try to provide information for whatever your level of understanding is. We want to make sure we're communicating respectfully, and then we want to take space and make space. So when we talk about that, what we mean is, I'll probably be talking a lot, and I apologize for that. Nick will be talking a lot. He doesn't need to apologize since he's, you know, he's going to be given the presentation. But when we have time for our audience and interaction, we just want to make sure that we're letting everybody have a voice if they want to. So I, we really appreciate our Flint Coalition members for helping us develop this because it's been really helpful for our meetings. All right, so this is kind of what our night's going to look like tonight. And the first thing that we want to do is really introduce our staff. The first person I need to introduce is Nat Switzer. She is our Air Quality Division Director. So she's also a decision maker on this permit. So as you can see, she's not going to be up here with the panelists. She's going to be listening as a neutral party from the audience, making sure she hears all the questions that you all have. And then when we get to the hearing portion, she'll be sitting up here with me so we can listen to your comments.
Thank you. Good evening. Jennifer said, I'm Nat Switzer. I am the Air Quality Division Director. So during the hearing portion tonight, I'll be up, hearing all of your comments and also going to be listening to all of your questions during the meeting tonight. Really appreciate you taking time out of your evening to be here with us tonight. Appreciate your involvement, your interest, and we hope that we're able to answer your questions and help you better understand our role, what is in the proposed permit, and answer those questions that you may have. So we're happy to hear from you, and thank you again. I'm going to turn back over to Jen so we can get going with the.
Yeah, thanks, Nat. All right, so I'm going to just go down the line here. What I'm going to do is introduce the person and kind of tell you a little bit more about what their role is with this permit because even though Nick, as the permit engineer, did a lot of the work, he's not the only one that works on this. It really takes a team for us to be able to do all the review that we need to do, ensure that these permits that we're putting out for comment can meet the air quality rules and regulations, a really important part of it. So Nick Carlson, he's our permit engineer. So like I said, he did a lot of the work. You're going to be hearing a lot from him in a couple of minutes. And then we have Matt Carl, and he is the inspector for this facility. So he does other inspections in Flint as well, so he's kind of in this area. Some of you might know Dan McGee, he's another one of our inspectors. So Matt's the inspector for this facility, so he'll talk to you a little bit about that if you have questions about the inspection process or compliance, things like that. Keisha Williams, Dr. Keisha Williams is our toxicologist. So toxicologists are folks that we work with. They develop health-based screening levels. And so what she might be able to talk about tonight is how we use those health-based screening levels when we look at permit applications and things like that. Jim Haywood, so there's these two folks on the end, their roles are going to sound the same. So I'm going to explain a little bit. So we've got Jim Haywood, and he is our air modeler. So we'll talk a little bit more about modeling later, but what Jim does is he's also a meteorologist. So he takes information about the facility and pollutants that they might have, and he looks at, uses a computer model to look at where those impacts might be to make sure that people in the area are protected. Erica Wolf works in our air monitoring section, so a little bit different. What she does is she works with the stationary monitors, the monitors that are kind of in one place that measure pollutants in the outdoor air. So I know those kind of sound the same, but they'll be able to answer questions about their kind of areas of expertise when we get into it. So you've met all of us. The next thing we're going to do in the agenda is we're going to go through that information session. So like I said, Nick and Matt are going to mostly be talking to you during that. I'm going to make Nick use the microphone so he can hear him really well. And he's going to talk, like I said, a little bit about air quality division, what we do, what our role is, and then why we're here tonight. We'll get to that question and answer session where we'll be able to take questions from you guys, hopefully give you some answers about questions that you might have. We'll get to that hearing portion, and we're going to talk about making a comment. So a few things about making a comment is you don't have to make a comment tonight if you are not ready. So I want to just be very clear, you can. We would love for you to, but a lot of times people get information at these and they're like, I don't really know what I want to say yet. I want to go write it down. I want to think about it more and be a little bit more thoughtful. You can do two comments. You could do one tonight. You can do one later. So the comment period will stay open until February 15th. So you'll have, you know, some days after this to get us those comments. We'll talk about those other ways that you can get us those if you don't want to do it tonight. So then we'll talk about where can you find other information and how to contact us. So I know it sounds like a lot, and I apologize for talking so much, but I'm going to pass it over to Nick, and he's going to get started on the presentation. So Nick, you go ahead and be ready. Do you want the clicker?
I'll take the clicker.
I'll put it right here for you, and then you have the mic. You're good, all right.
Yes, does that sound good, you guys? All right, perfect. So my name is Nick. I am the permit engineer who worked with our wonderful air quality staff to review the air permit for Universal Coating. So the Air Quality Division looks at air pollution, as you might have guessed, and it can come from a variety of different sources. So it can come from things like power plants, fuel-burning vehicles, even bakeries that have air emissions. So our mission is to protect the public health as well as the environment through the rules and regulations that we have available. So I'm going to just give you a quick rundown of, you know, things that we do as air quality staff. Some of the things we do include monitoring levels of air pollutants. We also examine toxic air contaminants to make sure that the public health is protected. So we take a look at what we call health-based screening levels, which we'll talk about in more detail later. And also conduct inspections of facilities like Universal to make sure that they're complying with their permit and these state and federal rules. And then we also review applications to make sure that they're meeting those rules and those regulations and write permits based on those to make sure that they're going to meet those. So we have the authority to regulate sources through our state and federal rules, but there are some things that we aren't able to cover that our state and federals don't give us the ability to regulate. These include things like zoning and site selection, as well as noise and traffic on public roads. So for things like that, you'll want to talk to your local government about that. And then, you know, it also does include, you know, the popularity of the project, whether it's desirable in the community per se, and whether or not a project is needed. So now I'm just going to give you a quick, kind of like, A to B from, you know, when you receive the application to when the permit is issued, just to give you an idea of that process and, you know, what we look at. So the first part of the process is that the facility wants to either install equipment or modify existing equipment. So once they make that decision, they put together an air permit application, and they'll send that to us. And then we'll receive that application. When you receive that application, it goes through some preliminary screening to make sure that everything's there. And once we decide that, you know, everything is as needs to be for us to review it, we start a review. And through the review process, we look at a variety of different things, including state and federal rules that may apply. We also look at, you know, what kind of pollutants might be coming off of whatever the equipment is. So we take all these things into consideration, and once we complete our review, we put together a draft air permit. So once we have that draft air permit, in some cases, we will have public comment. So during the public comment period, we have, you know, put all the documents out for people to review and to take a look at. And then we'll take the comments over the span of 30 to 45 days, depending on the type of public comment. And once we have all of those comments, that takes us to reviewing and evaluating these comments. So public comment is a very important part of the process because we'll take those comments, and that goes towards, you know, the decision-making. So the next part of that, you know, once you review and evaluate those comments, is to have the decision on the permit. And in this case, one of the three things that happen, the first would be, you know, the draft permit is issued as written. The second option is issue changes, and the third option would be it would be denied if they don't meet the state and federal regulations of the proposed. And now we've kind of gone through the permitting process, how we get from that application to, you know, the end. You know, let's talk a little bit more about Universal Coating, just to give you a background on, you know, what they do and what we're looking at. So Universal Coating is located between Goldwood Road and Carpenter Road, and they do specialty painting and pretreatments. And by pretreatments, it's, they apply, they apply, like, it's kind of like an extra coating to make sure that the paint isn't going to come off, and it keeps it from, you know, having too much friction on certain parts depending on how it's used. And so Universal Coating is a major source of hazardous air pollutants. And what that means is that due to the size of it, it's subject to additional regulations. So instead of, you know, just looking at state rules, we're also looking at federal rules as well. And with this comes, you know, additional record-keeping, monitoring, things like that. And so tonight, we're here to go over the permit application as Universal would like to make some changes to their existing permit. So I'm going to go through real quick just kind of what they currently do. So at Universal Coating, they have paint lines, and a paint line consists of paint booths. And so once the parts are coated in those paint booths, the emissions are routed to a control device. And like during the process, depending on the paint booth, they'll also have an oven. So they'll cure and write those parts. And so all of those emissions from those paint booths and from those ovens get routed to a control device. The control device is used to reduce the pollution, so it will destroy some of those pollutants to greatly reduce those emission releases that we're looking at. So I'm just going to kind of give you a good, I guess, like, picture of, you know, kind of what we're looking at. So currently, Universal has 10 paint lines at the facility. They're kind of all in the same enclosure. And they'd like to install two new paint lines. So these 12 paint lines are all within the same enclosure, and this enclosure is designed to capture 100% of the emissions. And they route those all to a control device. Because we were routing all 12 of them to a control device in this case, we looked at.
You're fine. I'm just going to try to move this out of the way because it's blocking some, so.
Okay.
Sorry, everybody. Ignore the woman behind the screen here, not with you all down in the bottom. Is that okay? There. Now you can actually see it. Okay. Sorry, Nick.
No problem. Okay. So as I was saying, we've got the 12 paint lines that are all within that same enclosure, and they're all going to be routed to the same control device. Because we're adding two paint lines to that existing enclosure of 10, we looked at the entire thing all together, like all 12 paint lines, all of those emissions routed to the same RTO. And so we.
Not to interrupt, but you just said RTO. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
So an RTO is a regenerative thermal oxidizer, which is a mouthful, so I'm just going to refer to it as a control device. But it's just a specific kind of control device that destroys air pollutants. So they all get routed to that control device. We looked at all of them together. And one of the considerations that we made when we were doing the review was to make sure that, you know, with these two new paint lines, we want to make sure that that control device can handle all that extra flow from the other two paint lines.
And so where does it go after it goes into the control device?
So once it goes to the control device, it will reduce it to, by like 95%. So that's like the control efficiency, and then it's exhausted to the empty air.
Exhausted to where?
Outside, sorry.
Outside in my head, remind you. Yes, yes, okay.
And so the paint lines that they're proposing to install are called tumble spray coating lines, which is essentially a large drum that rotates. And as it rotates, it continuously sprays the parts, so you get a more even distribution of the paint. And while it spins, it also has a stream of hot air that dries the parts as well. And as I mentioned before, all of those emissions are routed to the control device. Okay, so we talked about, you know, what equipment we're looking at. So let's talk a little bit more about the pollutants that are coming from that. So we have three different categories of pollutants that we're expecting to see from this project. These include volatile organic compounds, hazardous air pollutants, and toxic air contaminants. And for some of these, they kind of overlap a little bit. So you can have, you know, volatile organic compounds that are also hazardous air pollutants. But, you know, sometimes you'll have some there. Oh, sorry, do you have a question?
Where will you get the water to run this extra stuff at?
I'm sorry, was that?
Where will you get the water from to run the equipment?
The water from to run the equipment?
To run the equipment.
They don't, it doesn't need.
Yeah, it doesn't require any water. It's just a combustion for that. I think that's all. Yeah, so there's no water involved. Yep, thank you for your question. Um, so yeah, so we've got volatile organic compounds, we have hazardous air pollutants, and we have toxic air contaminants. So the volatile organic compounds are covered by both our state rules and our federal rules. So we'll get both of those in that case. We also have hazardous air pollutants, which are covered by the federal rules, and there's a list of 180 of those. And that's what I'll be keeping, so you can find that on their website if you're wondering about that specifically. And so those are, those have certain requirements that lead them to being hazardous air pollutants or to be classified as so. So we also have toxic air contaminants, and these are state only rules that we have these. Michigan's kind of special in that we are able to look at these with our rules. Other states don't necessarily have that. And currently, there's over 1,200 of those that we will look at, and we have.
Not from this process.
Not from this process, sorry. Yeah, so not from this process. So we have like 1,200 in the database that we look at, and, you know, we have new pollutants that come in, we take a look at those too. So, but yeah, from this, it is definitely not over 1,200. Thank you, Jen. All right, so now I kind of just want to go over, you know, why this control component is so important. So I have this table up here. It has the uncontrolled emissions, and it's got what the emissions look like with control. And so uncontrolled, you have your volatile organic compounds at 994 tons per year, which is a lot. And with hazardous air pollutants, you have 92 tons per year, which is also a bit of it. And then when you take the control into consideration, it reduces that by a lot. So those volatile organic compounds go down from 994 down to 49.7. And then hazardous air pollutants go down from 92 all the way down to 4.6 tons per year. Yes?
I have a question. Are those hypothetical numbers or are those numbers from the actual facility?
Yeah, so this is based on the permitted, the permitted levels. So I'll get to that in a minute too with the specific, like, permitted limits that we currently have, but that's based on that. That's a very good question. Thank you. So yeah, like, like I mentioned, so we'll talk a little bit about those limits and, you know, what is changing from the current permit to the new one. So here we've got a table that kind of goes into, you know, those limits that I had mentioned. So in the current permit, the emission limits that we have are kind of reflective of that table I just showed you. So we've got the 49.7 tons per year for the volatile organic compounds, and then the 4.6 for the hazardous air pollutants. And so with the proposed permit, they're not proposing to increase or change those emissions. So it is going to remain the 49.7 and the 4.6 tons per year, and these are the permitted emissions. So this is where the limits come into place and add that cap. So the only difference that we're seeing is instead of 10 paint lines, they'll have 12.
That's a question.
Oh, yes.
So when you, when they add additional paint lines, is there an optimal amount that can actually go through that controller?
That's a very good question, yeah. So when we take a look at our review, we take into account, like, the maximum capacity of those applicators and those foods. So we looked at all 12 of them together, like emitting at that capacity, and compared those against their screening levels.
I'm just curious as to why there's no change when they add additional.
Yeah, so these are just the permitted amounts.
Allowed.
Yeah, the allowed, yes. So these are just the allowed emissions. So this is where they have their permitted cap. This isn't actually like the potential percent.
The actual emissions are different. This is the most they can do is what you're seeing on the screen right now. This is what they would be allowed. So their actual emissions, what might come out of the actual painting with the two extra painting lines, it might not even be this much. It might be less, but this is the amount that they cannot go over. And that number is not changing. Even with adding the two new lines, they have to accommodate for those two new lines within the confines of what is permitted. Does that help? I know it can get confusing for sure, so it's great questions.
Yeah. Thanks, Jen.
Yep.
And that's a really great question. Thank you. And so, yeah, so what is changing essentially is, you know, 10 paint lines to 12 paint lines. And so now I just kind of want to run through the permit review, you know, what we look at when we're looking at, you know, draft and permit conditions, what we do when we have those permit applications, like where we go from there. So we have a regulatory review. So we look at the state rules, we look at the federal rules, and we compare those against, you know, what they're proposing. You know, are they going to meet that? Are we going to be able to, you know, compare those emissions that they're proposing? And are those going to be able to be met by those standards that we have set? We also look at air toxics review. So after those toxic air contaminants that I mentioned, we have those screening levels of the library of over 1,200. And so we compare it against those. In the case if we have, you know, a material and a coating or something that we're not familiar with in our database, we'll send it to our toxicologists, like Keisha, right there. And they'll take a look at it and make sure that, you know, through their research, that it's going to get levels that are going to be safe for the public and the environment. And in some cases, and also in this case, we also looked at air modeling. Air modeling is sometimes necessary to kind of get a more specific picture, like closer to the actual as opposed to just the more generic review. So we'll do air modeling to kind of refine that. And so at the end of the day, when we look at these things, we wanted to make sure that Universal was going to meet the state and the federal rules with the changes that they were proposing. Okay, so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about those health-based screening levels I had mentioned. I'm just going to give you a pretty brief overview, but, you know, if you have any additional questions, we'd be more than happy to answer. So with the state's health-based screening levels, these are designed to protect against health problems from air pollution. And these potential air emission levels are compared to these screening levels for toxic air contaminants, as I previously mentioned. And based on the proposed emissions, the health-based screening levels would not be violated in this case. So the next step from after looking at those toxic air contaminants is to look at modeling. So with modeling, you have computer models that simulate the concentrations that neighbors can expect to see around them. And this would be, you know, we're looking at the worst-case scenario. So when we look at modeling, it's kind of making a, like a virtual grid around the facility. And so we're looking at the highest worst-case scenario, like the highest worst-case potential scenario at all of those points as opposed to, you know, in reality, it's probably just going to be a portion of that wherever the wind's kind of pushing it. But when we do modeling, we look at everything. So in this case, we look at that for those toxic air contaminants. So now I'm going to kind of just walk you through, you know, what you can expect to see in the permit as well as what we can expect to see in the current permit with those changes. So in permit conditions, you can expect to see requirements for the proper use of equipment, proper use of control devices. Like I had mentioned before, in this case, the control device is very important. It reduces a lot of those emissions. There's also monitoring conditions as well as record-keeping conditions. So the facility has to keep track of, you know, the products that they're using, how much they're using. You know, if there's any testing, we want them to keep test reports for us so that we can see that, you know, how things are reviewed or how things are going to be operating. So you can also expect to see restrictions on materials. So these would be things like, for example, a few, a fuel usage limit. So in some cases, we'll have equipment that only uses natural gas, it would be cleaner. We also have reporting conditions. So for example, if something's installed within 30 days, we'll have them notify us so that we know it's up and running. And we also have testing conditions, which is very important. And I'll talk a little bit more about the specific testing for the control device on the next slide. And then, you know, we've got emission limits. So I mentioned before a little bit of the volatile organic compound emission limits as well as the hazardous air pollution emission limits, so it's things like those. So now I kind of want to talk a little bit about what we're going to see in those proposed conditions. So you'll see the existing emission limits, like I had mentioned, they're not changing from the previous permit. They're going to be the same. In addition, we'll have conditions for the proper handling of waste materials. So we want to make sure that, you know, if we're using coatings, we keep things covered so that we're not going to have, you know, things evaporating. We want to keep it contained as contained as possible. We also have what is called a malfunction. Essentially, a malfunction of abatement plan. It is a plan so that if something happens with the control device, you know, they can remedy that situation, they notify us. And so it's just kind of in place to make sure that if something happens to that control, they have a path forward to what they're supposed to do. And with that malfunction of abatement plan, that's reviewed by the district inspector, so they'll see what they've got it as well to make sure that it's going to meet the standards that we have. So then we also have those control device requirements that I had mentioned. These are really, really important. So we have that 100% capture, so that's kind of that enclosure that we talked about, where it's designed in such a way that it's going to capture all of those emissions so that they can all be routed to the control. And then we also have the 95% destruction. So the 95% destruction is, you know, the percentage of the pollutants that are, you know, routed to that control device that are going to be destroyed. And so this is determined through testing as well. So they'll have to make sure that they're meeting that 95%, and they do it routinely as well. Oh, there we go. Okay. It kind of stuck for a minute, sorry. And so we have associated record-keeping as well. So like I mentioned before, they need to keep records of what they're using. They need to keep, you know, records with the malfunction of abatement plan as well. So if there is a malfunction, you know, we know about it, we know the steps that they took to make sure that it's working properly. And so these are things you can expect to see in the permit conditions. So I believe, oh, did you have a question? Yes.
Yes. Your emissions, what is the requirement device that takes the, the used parts out of the emission?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, like, middle part.
Such a smoke is coming up. Such a smoke is coming up. Is there, there a scrubbing device?
Oh, a scrubber.
Oh, is there a scrubber?
Yeah, repeat your question. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question. So you were asking about if there's a scrubber, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so in this case, um, for the type of process that it is, they're not using a scrubber. They're using a regenerative thermal oxidizer instead. So it kind of works differently in how it controls it.
Can you talk, talk a little bit about how it works though?
Oh, the oxidizer? Yes, okay, sorry. Um, so like, uh, first, I have a thermal oxidizer. Sorry, I keep saying it. It is a mouthful. Um, so basically it uses natural gas combustion to heat up the air inside that control device. Um, which basically converts the pollutants to, I believe it's carbon dioxide and um, and water. So it basically makes those enter for ninety five percent of those.
When do you get, get rid of the water?
Where do we get it coming?
How much do you get rid of the liquid that comes out of it?
That is a very good question. I'm not, I'm not personally, like, sure.
It's, it vaporizes.
Yeah, usually it turns into vapor. Yeah.
It's super heat, so it's so hot that it burns everything and breaks it down. And that's how it only releases some and the other parts get converted. So you might see some steam coming out of it sometimes, not usually, only when it's really cold. Um, you shouldn't see smoke. If you see smoke, it means it's not working right. Um, so sometimes steam and smoke can look similar, but they're, they're not. Um, so yeah, it's a really, it's a nice piece of control equipment for painting. It's very, very good for painting. Because it's one of the things that works the best to knock those pollutants down as far as they can. So, does that help? I know these are in, like, interesting processes to learn more about.
Uh, I used to work in the paint department.
Okay.
Flip soup.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah. Did you guys have one? Uh?
I, I don't.
Sorry, Nick. These sidebar, these are really good questions.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, it's very interesting. And thank you very much for asking that question. I think it's really important to know like how.
So if we were to catch some of the steam, the vapors in a, a beaker or a cup, then we could drink it.
I probably, I don't think that would be a good idea.
Okay, so then it's poisoning. So then it's poisoning the air.
There is some pollutants being released. Yep.
Smell it. Uh, I'm worried about smelling it with re, with, with the plate or the incinerator and A J S there. With three smells coming in, it's kind of confused. It's bad enough just one smell, but we might have three smell. You saying that you can keep your smell down?
So think about, um, so the company is already there. They're already painting. They already have this control device that's already operating. They're just adding a couple more. They want to add a couple more paint lines to that.
Okay.
So if you are getting odors from anything there that is bothering you, then we're going to give you Matt's number. You can give him a call and he will come out and.
Matt's home from where?
He comes from Lansing.
Okay. Are you the one that inspects J R torch when you get called?
No.
No, it's a different inspector. But we, but we all work together, so we can talk about that. We'll, Matt's going to talk a little bit about what he does in just a second here. So hopefully that will help to answer some of those questions. Is that right now?
That is the next slide, so that's the perfect.
Good segue.
So, yeah, so, um.
Oh, wait, she still has one question.
I had a question about the steam versus the smoke. How would a person living in the community even recognize the difference?
That's a great question. I don't necessarily, I don't think that should be your job unless you would like it to be. If you see stuff coming out of there and you are concerned at all, I would call Matt. Um, we go to, actually, we go to a special training so that we can tell the difference really easily. Um, so now you're, this might be a really good thing that we do like a community conversation about. Cause there is, we can talk a little bit about the difference between. Tell there's some, you know, kind of indicators, but it depends on what the process is. So is it painting? Is it burning? Is it torch cutting? To this gentleman's um, point, they're going to look a little different. Um, sometimes like with RJ, you know, in the past, we've seen yellow kind of smoke. You know what a campfire looks like, right? You might see yellow, you might see green, things like that. You should not see that coming from this process. It, if it is working like it's supposed to, which that's what the malfunction abatement plan is for, you should not see smoke. Come, when, as an inspector, if you see anything weird coming out of these, it's something, it's wrong, and you've got to take care of it. So it's a really good question. Follow-up, was that helpful?
No, because you didn't answer any questions.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, let's have Matt talk about his inspection role. And then we'll see what other questions folks may have.
See, because the problem is if it came out and ran out of water, if you wanted things. But once you blow it up into the air and vaporize it, you have your TTHMs that are in it. Am I correct or not?
What is the TTHM?
Yeah, I don't want to give the words to y'all use, which is worse than the water. Am I right or wrong here?
Well, there's definitely pollutants that come out of it. Yep. And that's, so that's our job.
That's what our concern is. We don't want to breathe any more of it.
Right.
That gentleman there with the mask on, he's on dialysis. And like you said, he likes to set out in his yard. He does, he's not speaking, must speak for him. He does his flowers and stuff. He likes to sit out there and chill it. But he can't because he's got to go in the house because the vapors are so bad. And they are chemical type. They can sprung the type for the paint. Now, you've gotten equipped, let's say we got a, a car or a truck that's qualified to haul one ton of dirt. But only you guys have planted two tons of dirt on it, and the machines are not going to handle it. And that's why we get smells. And that's why we don't get these smells till around ten o'clock at night when everybody's seeing it. So I get up, I'm on Doran Highway. I get up and I got to get in my car and ride all around over there to figure out where it's coming from. And I've been messing with this, arguing with this stuff since before the pandemic. I'm tired of it. I've called Lansing, I've called Washington D C. Nobody calls me back. I've called the White House. But when the lawsuit gets filed, you guys just jump and run. And you guys, you got degrees. So you're going up the list. Why did you change your names? Because you were so shitty in the past. You had to change your name.
I appreciate you bringing this up. I know you're very frustrated.
No, I'm not frustrated. I'm just tired of it.
Okay. Well, let's let, if we can let Matt kind of talk a little bit about the inspection process, and we're happy to.
Why are you not up there?
I will be.
Well, then get on up there because they don't know nothing. They're referring to you for everything.
No, that's all right. We're just scared.
See, these people, see these people, the reason why they came here and the reason why you got some of those flyers in your mailbox is because I stuck them in there last night. Riding around until nine, ten o'clock. Because I've got a concern about your kids and grandkids that come over and visit and got to visit that thing and smell that stuff.
Once, once in that, I would, a coter before was, a painter before was there?
I think they've done a coter for a long, like a painter for a long time. I think it's only been, they do pre-treatment, which is a little bit of, you know. Putting something on metal and the plastics so the paints are better.
But there's a bunch of facilities like in that thing.
Yeah.
You know, that same street.
Yep, definitely.
So, you know, that's also an issue.
Well, and this is good for Matt to hear too. I mean, he, he does spend time up here inspecting some of these facilities. So, well, let's hear a little bit more about what his role is and then we'll see if there's other questions. Does that sound good, folks? Okay. All right, Matt, you have a little bit about it.
Yeah, my name's Matt Carl. I'm the district inspector that's assigned to Universal Coating. So that means I do the compliance inspections for this facility. Uh, I intend uh, testing when they're testing the control. And I'd also be the person who feels any complaints, uh, air quality complaints. And so like permits, like the one we're discussing tonight, act as like a rubric for the inspections that I conduct. There, the checklist that I go down. So I look at all of the equipment that's permitted. Make sure that they're being operated properly for the control, the RTO. Like I'm checking that piece of equipment to make sure that it's running the way that it should be, that it's uh, operating uh, to its capacity. Uh, and so I also review all of the uh, work logs, maintenance logs. Uh, inspections that the company is conducting to make sure that they're meeting all of their requirements and they're permitted. Um, so for a facility like Universal Coating, they're submitting uh, semi-annual and annual compliance reports to us. So I review those, um, checking and making sure that they're again complying with all of their state federal requirements. Um, I also review their annual emissions inventory. That's where they go through and they tally up. From their year, all the production that they did, all the emissions that they would have from that past year. And I compare that to their permit, uh, to make sure that they're below those levels. Um, so, once I do all of that, it's written up and put online on our website. So you guys can review, uh, any of that information. They're very thorough. Like I said, uh, contains all the information. In the permit that has been checked. Um, if anything is out of compliance. Uh, at the facility, then I would send them like a formal communication. It's called a violation notice. Uh, those get posted online as well, as well as any like response that the facility has with their solutions, fixes, and any problems that come up. Um, yeah, and again, uh, my contact information is going to be uh, at the end of this presentation. So if you guys have uh, notice issues with the facility. Like, uh, my number, email will be in there, so you guys can reach out to me and I follow up on it.
And Matt will call you back. He will come in right now to call you back. If he gives him a call.
Yeah.
Um, he will contact you back. So.
Once in a while, there's some horrifying noise come out of that place at two o'clock at night. Uh, like a full truck drop something.
Okay.
And then uh, it wakes me up too. I live so close to that.
Yeah. So we don't.
No, his house is about five blocks away. He doesn't stay close, but he wakes him up.
Okay. Well, we, we don't do noise related things. We can try to find out who from the city would be able to do that. Unfortunately, we're, that's not.
Shouldn't have some very much.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry it wakes you up. That's not.
I got a hypothetical here. Let's say the plant is qualified to be able to run ten thousand parts uh, period of time. They get a contract from somebody that says we need another five thousand. What they got to do is in the same amount of time. So they produce those other five thousand parts additional to what they normally produce. So now their gauges and all this stuff, they're going to be up. So how do you find them? Do you find them or, or go and tell them, don't do it again?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, we have written requirements in their permits that track their, that require them to track in a format. That we grew their material usage. That's how we figure out like how much emissions are coming out of this facility. It's by how, how many, how much material that they go through. So that's why they add all the materials.
So I think he's saying no.
And they just, they, no, please go where I want to. So then, they just made a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more than normal. How much are you fine then for?
I, no, it depends. Like.
Fifty dollars?
It depends. It's, it's a, it's a uh, process that we would go through. So like, yeah, if they blew their material on it, they exceeded it. You know, we would uh, go to enforcement with them. And again, based, like based on the severity of like how, how much it was over. If they had like a financial benefit from it, like that goes into the penalties that they get assessed.
Okay. So they made another hundred and some thousand dollars. You guys charged them five hundred dollars. You know, does that going to affect them and make them stop?
It would, it'd be more than that, probably. Like, there's a, there's a.
So to find that you guys can charge J R torch, it's like he's been that, it's, it's a script bar down the street.
Yeah, he's.
You know what I mean?
And that, I think that's one of the things with enforcement is they do look, they take a lot into account when it comes to that. And if this company would violate, we would go through that process. So, and that does have public comment, just like here. So we would be talking to you guys about it too.
Yeah, but you talking to us about it and that's how to breathe it. It doesn't even equate one from the other.
I know. I understand. It's.
Now you don't, really don't.
It can be very frustrating.
No, it's not frustrating. That's why we're here.
Well, I think we'll get to the question and answer part here. I have one more slide and then we'll get to that and then we can open up for comments. A lot of the things that you're saying, I think would be really good for going on the public comment part, so that it's officially on the record as part of this permit too. So I think, did you have anything else you wanted to add right now? Okay, perfect. All right. So, talking about public comments. Um. So a lot of times we get questions, what constitutes a good comment for something like this? So, like the gentleman was saying earlier, you can say whatever you want when it comes to commenting. But there's definitely things that might make a difference in the permit and things that are like, less likely to make a difference in the permit. So you heard Nick kind of go through what is included in the permit. Um, Matt talked a little bit about the inspection process. So if you're looking at things that you might want to change about the permit, you're going to want to comment about, you know, things that are related to that. Maybe that there's not enough of something, or there should be something different here, or anything that you're noticing that might be um, wrong or not make sense. So those are the things that are going to be most likely to lead to changes. Um, so just want to kind of lay that out for you before we get to the Q and A. And I'm going to go to you first in the orange, if you don't mind.
How long has it been since they put in the request for the other lines they add?
So they haven't added any lines yet. They can't add them until we go through this whole process.
They haven't added any lines?
Um, I actually don't know the history. Do you know if they started out with the ten? I'm not sure. We might have to find that out for you.
Please.
Yes.
They added two more from when they started.
And no, they said they don't know. They just want to find out. I know.
So we'll find out. But right now they have the ten that we talked about. They're asking to add two more. And that's, they don't, they haven't added those two yet, just to be very clear.
I, I understand that, but it's important to know how long it's been since they added the other two.
Okay.
That they added before.
Yep, and we.
We were, we were. The room was full in protest against that. And y'all ignored it and let them add it.
Well, and I think that's one of the things that hopefully we can talk a little bit about tonight. I know it can be hard to hear. And I think Nick, when he talked about, we write these permits to meet the rules and regulations. It's the most important thing. So that's why Keisha looks at the toxics. That's why Nick looks at all the other pollutants that could be released. Because we want to make sure that what we're putting out there is protective. So this is why these limits aren't changing. So those caps are not changing. So it's, they want to add more, more paint lines, but the amount that they can release into the air is not changing. Those numbers are not going up. So it's, if, if they can meet the rules and regulations, we're going to grant a permit. If they can't, then we're, we're not. We want to make sure that we're not missing anything. That's why we're here taking your comments tonight and hopefully.
But you don't even have the history from the last meeting that they had for, for how we commented.
I mean, we do have that. We definitely do. We just don't have it here tonight.
Why are we even here with this when we told you before we didn't want?
Yeah, and I think that's one of the things too.
And you did it. I'm sorry, but you did it anyway.
Yep. Because of the permit that was written, not the rules and regulations. And that is kind of how, how our job works. Our job is to make sure that this company does some, all the things that it has to do to meet the rules and regulations. And when it doesn't, we write violation notices and we go through.
I got a question, and this can be looked up. You're part of the company, right?
No, none of us are from the company. We're from the state agency. We're not from the company. We're, we're from the state agency. So all of us are.
Let's see, what I would like to know, how much did that painting company donate to the governor's campaign?
Oh, we would have no idea. That's, doesn't come into bone with our permitting experience. So I have a question back here again.
How is some of the products that we make in back there?
So what are some of the products that they're making? I don't know, Nick, if you have, do you have an idea of some of the products that they're making? I'm going to have you some ideas here. A little quiet.
Um, so there's nothing like super specific, so it can range. Um, so I think typically it'd mostly be like automobile parts. Some parts for machinery that get coated. Um, but it's, they do specialty coatings too. So I believe that it could be, you know, anything else so long as it's a metal or plastic part.
Okay. During coating, you use some very harsh material. Where did that material go and get stored?
So where does the material go and get stored?
Material.
For like the waste material?
Coat, no. The liquid, you coat right, so. So you use some kind of liquid, whether it's paint or not.
Oh, yes.
Then you got to clean this out. Every day you got to clean it. Where would this go?
So maybe talk a little bit about, you had mentioned waste handling. So how they handle all the waste from the painting process and include, that includes like the cleanup, the solvents that they use to clean things up. Um, so can talk a little bit about what is the permit requiring them to do now? So what they're currently kind of doing and if there was any changes.
Absolutely. So there haven't been any changes from the last.
Absolutely, so there haven't been any changes from the last permit to this one in terms of how they handle the waste cleanup. Um, but they do need to include all of their paint in the emissions, so even if it's left behind and they're collecting that, that's still considered. Part of those emissions, and so with some of those material handling and, um, waste storage. Requirements, and make sure that, you know, they're contained, um, or if they're going to reclaim them and reuse them, so that, you know, you're not gonna see that coming up somewhere else.
Okay, so we're here because we got ten lines, we want just two more lines.
Yes.
Yes. So you have ten lines, and they wanna add two more lines, yep, so they're looking for approval to do that. So any other questions that you guys have? Yeah, go ahead.
Ms, Ms. Williams. Uh, have you? As they call the person. Check, check. Their health in the last ten years. Of the community right across the street, how asthma has an influx. In that community. How people are dying from asthma, children, now, now, let me back up, from people to children. Are dying from asthma, that they didn't know what, why the asthma was coming. But, but now they have asthma. It wasn't there before, the plant.
That's a really important question in terms of. If it's okay if I rephrase it and then I'll ask to make sure that I'm clarifying, uh, currently, 'cause that's a really important question. You're, you're okay, feel free to call me Keisha, so. What I understand the question to be, are we looking at and considering the. Health of the community, and things like the statistics around asthma in the nearby neighborhoods. Within our review, we don't incorporate those statistics, however, the health-based screening levels, the health-based national standards. Those take into account research studies that are based off of and consider. Community health and, and different types of statistics, it can be nationally or a specific community. But within our review, we don't specifically incorporate the. The health statistics of the nearby community in the way that you're describing in terms of looking at that. However, we do partner, as Ego, we do partner with others in terms of projects to look at local health statistics. Um, and as we're. Incorporating things like environmental justice principles, we're looking at different ways that we can, um, um, consider local health statistics in our work. But within this specific review, when we use research studies, sensitive populations are considered, but the specific lo- local health statistics for this community, that's not something that we incorporate. Did that answer your question then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, what do you? I do have a question with that, um, just because I know, like, from. N D H Ss, like, their asthma atlas, like, it does show that that neighborhood has. Like, one of the highest asthma hospitalizations in the state, so are you, like, looking at the data, like, over N D H S, that's another state agency? And part of this consideration?
Really, again, another really good question. It's not incorporated into the review. For this, the research studies, depending on the pollutant, let's say the most sensitive group is an asthmatic child. And for some pollutants, we know that the most sensitive groups are asthmatics. The research studies are, uh, based off of that such that. That then becomes a part of the health-based screening level or the health-based national standard, and so that's factored in. However, the specific statistics, and we are aware of them, related to D H H S and the statistics that, um, they collect and they review. But those for the specific community, that's not incorporated into those health-based screening levels.
So that's not considered in whether you wanna grant them, what, what I guess what I'm gonna say and ask is because a lot of kids out there. Have got, and adults have gotten asthma. From the facilities out there and die. That wouldn't matter in their permit.
So related to asthma and developing asthma, there can be a number of factors. Pollutants can definitely, depending on the pollutants, sometimes research will show that it can contribute to asthma, and that's why we have these health-based. National standards and these health-based screening levels to make sure that levels aren't reaching. Levels in the outer air aren't reaching, um. Amounts where they would be a health concern. But in terms of the local health statistics and knowing exactly whether someone's asthma came from. Um, a, a facility versus a number of other factors, that can be really difficult to say.
Well, I'll put it to you like this. People and kids that live in the projects out there and adults. They didn't get asthma out there, a large influx of asthma up until at this point would be nineteen years ago. The health department did a study. And you never heard anymore about it, which, that's what they do to black neighborhoods, you know it and I know it.
Well, they wouldn't put it on Pitt and Lake.
Yeah, they wouldn't put it on Pitt and Lake.
And with, I think. I think those are important comments to.
Do you live in this community?
I, I do not, and at this point, I think these are, we're kind of, uh, moving away from questions and more so into comments, and I think these are really important. Significant comments to make sure that you get on record.
Yes.
So that we can follow up and consider it in our evaluation.
Yep, agreed.
Our biggest time is.
Speak up, Dave, speak up.
We got, we got. Incinerator, Ajax, and we got the Flint. With all, with all three of them burning at one time, is putting out maximum, maximum pollution. If we can regulate that, so just one on. Or maybe two could go at the same time, it wouldn't be so bad, but with three of them going, this maximum. Pollution, and don't tell it what we're gonna get in there next because it's a, a low.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, and again, that's, it's a really good comment to make, we don't have the ability, unfortunately, to. Restrict a company's hours of operation so that they could do that, it, it's a good comment though, and certainly we have companies that are restricted to specific hours, and that's because without those restrictions. They couldn't meet the rules and regulations.
It's not, in our, in our problem, it's not a question of restriction of hours, it's a question of nine, ten o'clock. They crank up, and then you get, we don't get these odors and stuff during the day.
Yeah.
But at ten o'clock, it's a different story.
So I think that's actually a really good point that you're making, and I think, so Jim is a meteorologist, and there are some things that can come into play with weather and at night. That could cause the, that could cause smells to be elevated at certain times or certain weather conditions, so it's just, do you want, he can talk a little bit.
If you've got a really bad odor. And in the daytime versus, in morning, not morning versus afternoon, the humidity's different, so that means that these odors don't flow as far. In one versus the other when right or wrong.
You're correct, um, I'm curious, these odor, you say you get them at night, or do they pretty much more in the early evening, or more toward the morning hours?
No, they're mostly, uh, anywhere from ten, eleven o'clock, Dave. Until probably two or three o'clock in the morning, while you guys are in the bed, so we call you, ain't nobody getting up and coming from Lansing to Flint.
Well, you do get biological conditions like that at nighttime, it typically gets a little stiller outside, and especially this time of year, do you notice it more during?
Since, since that painting plant and these other plants have been over there, and we've been in our house at this point thirty-five years.
Okay.
I've never seen soot in the snow. You kind of understand what I'm saying, so it falls in the grass, the dirt, you don't see it, but when you got pure white snow, and it lands down there, and I'm only about four blocks away from it.
Okay, you said you've driven around the neighborhood.
If I get this heavy smell, like I got one night, my wife had had some eye surgery, and I had to go and close the windows, so I got in my car from ten o'clock. Until one thirty, I went to ride.
Okay.
Figure out where it came from. And that industrial road that comes, I'm on Doric and Coldwater.
Okay.
So I got to go around the car on the road, drive that down that industrial drive. To try to figure out where it is, but the only problem is, some of it, like with the, the incinerator plant, that doesn't fit down to a problem to it, you know, from come down. Depending on the humidity. Humidity makes the stuff fall down. Closer to the, which would be the neighborhood across the street. I get up on this stuff, I'm tired of, of this going, I called, uh, I had you guys on, on my phone, and I called, uh. I called Lansing.
Was it the one eight hundred number?
I don't know what it was, the five one seven, I got D C's number, uh, the one guy. Uh, the, 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 the asphalt, not the, the A W, whatever they are, the guy on Door Highway. Has a paving company, he would call Lansing on J R Torch. Well. J R, the, the, the inspector would get there about forty-five minutes later, to an hour later, he said across the street. But he, uh, he wouldn't see anything, 'cause he's got a call that I'm on my way. So somebody gets some money stuck in their pocket.
Can I go back to Nick? And Nick, you said that. Gave the numbers, how much they could do. So, they could do a certain amount. The, um. The other two plants can do a certain amount. So, is this certain amount combined for all three plants, or each individual have their certain amount? And so when they reach capacity, then hell, fall on the community.
That is a very good question, um, so with cumulative impacts with our state and federal rules. Um, as far as like the toxic air contaminants, we're not able to really look at those, keep like, in a cumulative way, we're just looking at all of them together. Um, with the criteria pollutants like the volatile organic compounds that I had mentioned, for those, those are based on the federal. National ambient air quality standards, and so for those, those do look at like cumulative effects across, you know, the country. However, for some of them, you know, with our rules and regulations, we just are not able to look at them combined. Um, so with those limits, they're just specific to that facility as opposed to all of them combined.
But that's a really good question.
So, yeah, because, it's a very good question, because. You had the paint, and what's the other name?
Incinerator.
The incinerator, and then I mean the paint, the incinerator, and now you allow the asphalt plant to come, and I had, so you continue to allow. Those to come into our community, right? Directly across from a, 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 a community. A, 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 a area that has children, seniors, and adults, right, directly across. It is, is from here across to, to Central School, that's the way it is, uh, out here on Door Highway. And, and so if, if you give everybody the limit, and you are studying allowing. Additional industry to come into our community, you can continue to compound. The effect on our community.
So, I do want, can you pass that down to Jim, if you mind, so it's a really good point, and like Nick said, and Keisha kind of addressed this too. We know we aren't looking at things the way you would like us to, and we know that the rules have limitations to that. But this group of people, their job is to make sure we look at the utmost we can with those rules and that we make them as protective as possible, so. One of the things that Jim does with his modeling, so remember that's where they take, use the computer to kind of look at. Where people would be impacted and make sure that those people are gonna be, not gonna be impacted in a way that's gonna be detrimental, so. Part of his work that he does, does look at some things collectively, and when we look at that, that's a really important part of the review process to make sure that that model is met, so Jim, if you don't mind talking a little bit about that, because it's. We know we're not doing everything that you would like us to do, but this is part of why we're, how we're trying to get there.
A lot of the pollutants that we look at, we do look at in a cumulative nature, the federal, uh, regulated pollutants out there, when we go do a study like this. We also have to know what your neighbors are emitting, and we tack those ends, now unfortunately, not every pollutant we get to do that, some of them we do. Other thing to remember is these plants all next to each other are not emitting the same thing. So.
You, you said the plants next to one another, what?
The different companies down there, they may not all be emitting the same pollutants, and so there may not be a cumulative effect from that. A part of what I do, and as part of what Nick does, he has to go through a lot of checks before he puts a stamp of approval that this permit's gonna meet. All of the, uh, state and federal regulations out there, part of that is we need to know. Predicting, forecasting, Jen likes to call it future casting.
Future casting.
And actually, I like that term.
You're looking into the future to make sure that the future will not be harmed.
Right, we need to know, we need to be assured beyond all reasonable doubt. That what this, uh, particular facility is gonna put out is not gonna cause or create any violations out there of the health standards. Now, it doesn't do any good for Erica to go out there and put a monitor before it's built, because there's nothing to measure. So what I do is I build into a computer model, which is just a simulation of what happens to the pollutants when it gets into the air, where does it go? How much is in there, where is it gonna come down? Now, you mentioned, uh, your bedroom window out there, if I can say that, how far away from this plant do you live?
We're six blocks away.
Six blocks away?
It'll be going blocks, but we, we're in between, uh, Coldwater and Stanley Road, and we're closer to Coldwater.
Okay. When I build this, I put a lot of virtual monitors, as I call them, in there, and I space them about a hundred and fifty feet apart. So I've got one, if you're within half a mile of a plant, I've got one pretty close to your window, I've got one pretty close to your garden out there. And what the model does, like I said, we take the maximum allowed and the best analogy.
Maximum, and just pause for one second, it's not the maximum allowed, it's the maximum that their permit would allow, so not like that big number, you know, some of it, Jim does look a little bit at some of that, but it's not like. What they could do if they just went twenty-four seven, you know, all of that, it's what would be allowed, so.
Think, think of your checking account, you always wanna have a little bit more money in your checking account than you plan to spend, you don't wanna bounce the check. It's sort of the same thing here, the company doesn't wanna bounce the check when it comes to their air emissions, so they're gonna ask for more than they plan to release, because they don't wanna be in violation, they don't wanna get fined. And so, when we put this into our model, we put in their max legal allowable. That they could, but they won't, into the model, so when we are sending that out to our virtual monitors outside your bedroom window. We are assuming an amount higher than they're ever gonna do, and that's a safety factor, we do that on purpose. We wanted, if we're gonna make a mistake, we're gonna err on the side of conservatism. And these models, I've worked with them for years and years and years, and the E P A who writes these models tries, they try to make them as accurate as possible, but my experience, when they actually do and they go out and monitor things after the fact. They tend to overpredict a little bit, so you've got a two-stage factor of safety here, you're putting more into the model. And when it predicts where it's gonna go down when, we're putting in more than they're actually going to do. If they do, and they go over that, the district people are gonna catch that, they're gonna get fined for it, and it won't, it won't stand. And the other one is the model's probably gonna overpredict, so I've got literally thousands of these virtual monitors out there, next, again, next to your bedroom window, in your garden, everywhere around you. And I'm only concerned about one, I'm worried about the one that gives me the highest impact, and in most cases with these types of plants, it's gonna be on their property boundary. But I'm only worried about one, because if one fails, in my world, they all fail. They all have to pass, and I can't give it back to Nick and say. It passes, go forth and give a permit, I will tell him it doesn't pass, I may just have one monitor, many times that does happen, I have one virtual monitor that fails, and that shuts it down right then and there. I have to go back to Nick and say it doesn't pass, it fails, just because of one. At that point, he has to go back, and he has to either go to the company or make recommendations and say, it's not flying, you're gonna have to do something. To reduce your emissions, because we're failing. He will not give a permit, I will not give my blessing to one of my modeling reports until they all pass. He will not approve a permit, and that will not approve the permit until they all pass, and that's just one part of this. And that's just one part of this application review. There's a lot of other things that Nick has to look at or control technologies and things like that. But in my world of modeling, where I put, where I build this facility in the mind of the computer. And I have monitors, again, about a hundred and fifty feet apart, roughly half a mile around the facility, maybe more in some cases. Again, every one of those, those thousands, tens of thousands, virtual monitors, every one of them has to pass. It has to be below the health standards that Keisha's group or the federal government comes out with. I don't, I don't make the rules for that. I'm not a toxicologist. Keisha's much smarter than I am. So the numbers I get from our toxics people that says this is the amount that's considered to be a safe level. For human consumption. I'm looking at that pollutant and every one of those little monitors has to be below that level. Again, if they're not, one fails, they all fail. I don't know, guess.
Oh, the things I'm not smelling.
Yeah, just, just like, uh, just like the HX plant got the, uh. What do you make, uh, asphalt out of? Uh, fuel. The chemical makeup of HX.
Did you bring some of your chemicals there?
Um, I don't have the actual, like, entire list with me, but.
The list, I want to see the bag.
I can provide it to you if you'd like.
Then we got the plater and then we got the incinerator. All that stuff combined together, we don't know what we smell. And that's, that's my biggest, I barely still smelled the, uh, like, the incinerator just had me running through the windows to shed.
Okay.
So.
So that's a good thing for Matt to know too, and he'll definitely share that with his other staff. And and just to be, you know, the things that Jim is looking at are things you can smell and things you can't smell. Because a lot of things you can't smell. You're right. So that's, it's a good point. We have a question online. So you guys can hang on just a second. Caitlin's going to ask a question from the folks that are watching virtually.
Yep, so this question comes from a Kate online and I'm going to read it exactly how she typed it. So the question is, I understand the emissions cap won't change under the requested permit. But what is the change in actual emission levels between what's being emitted now at ten paint lines? And what would be emitted at twelve?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you for submitting that. I think I'm going to have Nick maybe talk to that a little bit. And then Matt might have you as well.
Yes. So I'm just going to rephrase the question. So that was, um, what's the difference in emissions between like a ten and a twelve?
The actual emissions.
The actual.
Not, she said, she understands the permitted limits aren't changing, but the actual emissions will change. So what would be the difference between the ten and the twelve?
Okay, yes. So between the ten and the twelve, so I know I mentioned that permitted cap. Um, for the permitted emissions, so that's going to stay the same. So for the actuals, that's going to change the potential emissions. So with the actual emissions, that's going to depend on, you know, their production, you know, how they're, uh, proceeding with their production. Over that year. Um, so they're still going to be capped by that annual limit. It's just that on the shorter term, that's going to fluctuate a lot more. Um, so the potential for that, uh, could be higher in the short term, just between the ten and the twelve. If that answers the question, I believe.
See, there's a, there's a follow up. Do you have any other questions online? That's the only question online. Okay. So it's about ten to seven and I just want to let everybody know the library closes at eight, so they will kick us out of here. Um, I want to make sure, Mona, I saw your hand go up, um, but we want to make sure we're going to try to start the comment period around, or the comment period. The public hearing around seven-ish, so that's what we're shooting for. I just wanted to let folks know. Mona, what's your question?
Okay, good. I have a confident question. Um. One, first, uh, thank you for making a concerted effort to use people-friendly language. And for being here tonight, um, and for having an ongoing dialogue over community. Because we really are trying to understand and I, and protect our community and that's used. That's why we are fiercely passionate about this, because we, we really do see people dying. And struggling with multiple health issues in this immediate area of this industrial complex. Um. So it it is, uh, we're we're all seeing this. Like we're in different parts of this neighborhood all around. Okay, so I just want to emphasize what others have said on that. Um, and I share the cumulative impact concerns. I share the concerns around. Um, the the limitations on how Eagle is considering health. Based, uh, local data, hyperlocal data. For, you know, how do you take what we're seeing and then match it to the data the state has? Okay, I just want to emphasize that. Um, when we know that there's data out there for the neighborhood. Um, when Eagle is saying we need support public health, like there's a good community, right? Okay, so what my question is, um, just filling out the prior conversation. There's a, Universal Coating does have some history of, um, violations. So I don't know if this is the question. It it may be for for Matthew or maybe for Nick. Could you, could you talk a little bit about the history of violations? Uh, for Universal Coating, what was violated, how much? Uh, when, um, just so we have a sense of the history of that. Because we're trying to get a really clear picture of this company and how additional spray lines. You know, if if you're going to permit more, but they're not really holding to their permit.
Right. Yeah, that's a good question.
That that's the problem, right?
Yeah, so Matt can definitely talk about some of their history of compliance. And, um, a little bit more about what we've seen as going and doing inspections and in that kind of stuff.
Uh, yeah, uh, so, uh, the most recent violation notice that they received, uh, was, um. Back in twenty twenty-one, uh, August twenty twenty-one. It had to do with, uh, one of the burn off ovens at the facility, uh, they had some opacity.
Can you tell, talk about what a burn off oven is just so?
It is a oven that runs at high temperature and is used to, uh, clean, uh, parts. Or racks of coatings.
Where do it vent?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, so the issue with that was they were having some opacity come out of that stack.
Can you talk about what opacity is? This is language that we use, but it's not, opacity is not common language. Neither is visible emissions, so it's playing a little bit better.
Oh, the smoke that is, uh, observable.
Um, so it's too much smoke. They're allowed to have a little tiny bit, but if you have too much smoke, then you're violating. They call it your opacity and your visible emissions. So that's how the rule was written. But it's basically like the company had too much smoke for too long. They weren't operating the ovens properly. And they. Yeah, and it burns out to the air.
We have to breathe it.
So that's one of the smoke stacks that you probably would see.
Those swerves cost a lot of money, but will swerves be on some of them?
They, no, not on these, because they wouldn't actually work very good on these. But but, so let's let Matt, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so the corrective action for this issue was, uh, that burn off oven had. Uh, some parts were placed on it, so basically they added new insulation to the, the walls of it were improved. So that it could get a higher combustion temperature, um, that met experiment requirements. So when it got hot enough, then you didn't see those issues, that smoke anymore. Because it was actually functioning the way that it was supposed to. So that was the resolution in that case. We noticed that there was a problem, brought it to the facility's attention, they made repairs to the oven. That's one of the ways that we like to see these things go is, you know, there's a problem, we bring it up, we get it addressed.
Well, I do have a question then, um, as we're talking about that scenario, um.
Yeah.
So the, was that, did that happen because of routine inspection or did that happen because someone called and complained?
I'm, I'm not certain where the origin for it was.
We can find out for sure. I, I don't know.
Is there periodically checked?
Yes, definitely. So hold on one second on that question. Was there any other compliance history that you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, that was the most recent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, so. Um, when Matt goes out to do his inspections, he does, um, frequently and he, like he talked about earlier. He, everything in that permit, he looks at. So if it says, you can't have this smoke, he goes, you got the smoke? You, if you got the smoke, you're in trouble. You can only have this much pollutant going out. If you have more than that, you're in trouble. That's part of his job. So he goes out, um, but at least. Every other year is like what he has to do. That's a requirement, but he goes out a lot more frequently than that. Because it's, our job is to make sure that the company is complying with this piece of paper that we're giving them. The permit is a legally binding document. So if they don't follow the permit, they don't follow that legally binding document, they get in trouble. So and and Nayera's right, to your point, sometimes it does take y'all calling us and saying like, hey, there's a problem. I know that can be sometimes frustrating to do. You don't have time to Lathan's point. He sometimes goes out in the middle of the night. Calls and, you know, complains. Um, we're not the eyes and ears out there all the time. As you pointed out, we don't live in that neighborhood, so we do count on folks letting us know. Well, you know, like Matt said, he'll, he wants to give you his phone number, his email, contact him directly if you have issues or you see anything. You know, on a lap. Let me just check the time. Six fifty-six. So I want, I do want to take the five minute break around seven. So how about this be maybe our last question? Yeah.
I just had a question now, that looks pretty much recent violation. Can you give us an idea how many, how many violations there may have been?
Do you have, uh, going back farther? We can find that out for you. We brought kind of the recent history. So, uh, I'll talk a little bit about, you mentioned earlier, talking about the inspection reports and things we post online. I know not everybody has access to the internet. If you do not, um, give a call, we can send you anything that you're looking for. But what we've put online are any violation notices that they've gotten. Um, also we put responses to violation notices. So the two thousand, was it twenty, when did you say? What was the year, twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty-one. So when the company sends us a response and says, hey, you know, this is what we're doing to fix it. We also post that so you can see exactly what the company said they're going to do and then we hold them to it. Um, all of Matt's inspection reports, any other inspection reports are on there. Stack testing, so I'm talking about stack testing. Um, one of the things with this permit, they have this control device. We don't just like believe that it's operating properly. We make them test it to, to assure that it is. Those also get posted online. So anything like that, if you're like, hey, I want to know more about this, but I don't really understand what this stuff is. I don't know what to ask for. You can call me, you can call Matt. We're happy to walk you kind of through what is online and and talk to you about it. If you have questions on it. Um, but we post all of that stuff because we want. Communities to be able to have access to what's going on in their area and be able to look at all that. Now, that process isn't the easiest to navigate. So again, if you're online and you're like, I do not know how to find this, Jennifer, please help me. I will be glad to walk you through it. So, um, I don't want people to be frustrated because our internet is crazy and sometimes it is. And it's kind of frustrating to use even for us. Um, so thank you to panelists. Thank you guys for all of your great questions. I hope it gave you some information. So we're going to take like a five minute break. We'll get these guys out of here and Matt and I will come, we'll do the formal hearing. So just as a reminder, that's where you guys will give us your comments on this. Those will go on the record. But sometimes if you're talking, you'll be like, and I want to know more, or can you answer this question? We won't be able to respond during that time because it's just for the record. So any final questions before?
Yeah. Bone over to Washington DC. It's been changed.
Okay, I don't have that right now, but we get it for you.
Good.
Okay. All right, let's take until seven oh five and then we'll come back and start the hearing, okay? All right, thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it.
Can you email it to your willing?
Yes, we will. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon. I am with the Michigan Department of Environmental Relations and Energy, or Eagle, and I will be the hearing officer tonight. And that's Switzer, Air Quality Division Director, is the decision maker for this permit application. She'll be listening to your comments this evening. She will considering all comments before making decision. This hearing is related to a request from Universal Coating, which it, um, sorry, excuse me, located at five two zero four Energy Drive in Flint, Michigan. The company has requested to install two new paint lines in their existing facility. The air quality division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing these responsibilities is Part fifty five of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can install and operate any new equipment, they must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure that these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to allow anyone interested in a proposed permit to provide information that you can use in deciding whether to approve the permit or if there are additional issues to consider. Please note the proposed permit is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be granted at all. The department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria we can use in making decision. So for example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within our authority. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed project. The public comment period for this proposed permit began January ninth and will end at midnight on February fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Additional comments or inter- information may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment during this hearing by email or by voicemail. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended, attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and if applicable, the approved permit. So please recognize that department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. You may submit a written comment at any time during the comment period by US post or email, or you may call and a comment to our public comment voicemail. I'll begin calling the names of the people who have indicated they would like to make a verbal comment tonight. Once we go through the cards, anyone who would like to make a comment will be able to do so, even if you did not mark that you would like to comment on your comment card. For those online, you may type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment in writing tonight. If you would like to make a verbal comment from online, you can raise your hand and we will unmute your line so you can speak. So thank you so much for your attention. I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. And I apologize in advance if I do not say your name properly.
I got a question. I know there's none. Does it have to have been in writing?
No.
No.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's an okay question for now, so thank you. All right, so the first name is Bernadelle Jefferson Bishop. So Bernadelle, if you don't mind standing, wait for Lisa to come over to you. She's got the mic so we can make sure we hear everything you have to say. And I apologize, this is Lisa here, and I think I didn't introduce her, but it's fine.
Thank you. My name is Bishop Bernadelle Jefferson. I reside at sixty one ninety North Code Highway, Marmo, West Michigan, which is right there in the vicinity of the plant. And my question is, or comment is question, that, um, there is a limitation of what they can use. Each, each, so the paint has a limitation of how much they pollution they can put in to give. My question is, there, there are three industrial plants right there in that same area, in this same area. And so have you considered the pollution all three of them gives off to the community? To our well-being, to our health, to our breathing? Have you considered the effect of this pollution on the breathing health of the community? There's a community where I have a granddaughter that just turned one. And I can't tell you how many times she's been in the hospital for her breathing. And I live less than a mile away from the plant. But the air and the consideration of what those three plants, and I know it's one that has an application, but there are three that you just gave the asphalt plant permission last year. And here we are getting permission. They just got two new lines in two thousand and twenty. This is two thousand and twenty four, and I asked them for two more. What is the limitation? What is the boundaries?
Thank you so much for your comment. We do appreciate that. Uh, Nayira, you had your name on there. If you could say your whole name for the record.
Yeah, please, I'm Nayira Sharif. I am the director of Sun Rising, um. I'm gonna take this off because I have asthma myself, so it's hard for me to breathe and then talk and breathe. So I guess like I have, I'm gonna be submitting more technical comments, um, via writing, um, but I do have some process, um, and observations. One, I do appreciate the fact that there was a Q and A and able to have a dialogue instead of jumping right into a public hearing where people are like speaking into a black hole. Um, there is some room in the permit, um, when there is, uh, you know, this hybrid situation, which I also appreciate, but the fact that the participants online is hidden, like, I'm not sure like what they are seeing, but it too will feel like they're speaking into a black hole. And while I do appreciate the owl, you know, and, you know, I, I feel like as, as a toast practice, there, there could be greater integration and kind of like the transparency because we're all here because we care about, um, about this facility, well, well about our air, you know? And I would just say like finally, like why I do appreciate that the owner is an audience, which I'm, I've not seen that before, like.
I've been there.
That, that's cool, um, for this hearing. Um, I think like with a lot of the stuff expressed during the Q and A, you know, there, there is a real need for us to change the law so we can do the cumulative impacts. Um, so we can have kind of greater say around that. And this could be a learning experience and it is somewhat frustrating, you know, to hear this over and over again. It's very painful for me as someone who works in public policy. And I'll say like the final appreciation is that, um, there is a group of local organizations who, you know, have been working like, I guess almost a year now, um, to do like these air uh, quality like learning sessions. And I did appreciate that some of those, um, from previous presentations, the slides were in this presentation. And so that makes me like want to give gratitude that this is big part of, I will say like the broader kind of like educational pieces that can go out to folks around the state around, you know, air quality and, and, and air permitting.
Sure. Yeah, thank you so much for your comments, Nayira. Uh, the next person we have a card for is Adi Holt. Adi, so if you could just stand up and Lisa will come over to you. And then if you just don't mind saying your full name for the record and any affiliation like that.
Um, my name is Oki Ho. I own a manufactured adult, manufactured home park community. And I, it always seems like things are in Genesee Bill. They're benefiting the tax. Flint is not benefiting this tax whatsoever. We have problems with the highway. Uh, part of it's Genesee Bill or Genesee, however you want to call it, and the rest is just Flint. So we can hardly ever get the road fixed or anything. And a lot of this debris and stuff, it, you get up and you see it on your vehicle. You know, I mean, uh, you should be here when it snows. And let it be there two or three days. It, it's discovered. It, it's in the air. And it, it's like it's, we had a prayer center there that was in that area and then they moved down the road. And, uh, but I mean, they got out because of the power lines. And if this company is allowed so much pollution or whatever you want to call it out of their pipes, and if you've got three companies here, you got the asphalt company coming in and it got the power plant. I mean, are we talking three high if everybody's allowed one? And then another one, they're allowed one, you know, percent, you know what I'm saying? And then the other one's allowed percent. It sounds like to me you've got three percent instead of just one, you know? And it's just like it's adding one more thing that we already got. And if you see people that's sick, I mean, that, that should ring a bell. And when you think, wow, do I want to live here? And a lot of these people, they live where they can and their kids are, are breathing this too. And a lot of this comes up to people, it ain't like you kid, you don't sit tomorrow. You know, it, it's down the, down the line. I mean, it's not only people, it's pets and everything. And I mean, it's driving people right out of this area, a lot of this. I, I know rehab building. I mean, they drove them out because of the pollution, I would say, more or less. They couldn't keep up with it, the cost. But I, I think there has to be a limitation on total, you know, that don't, don't make it them that they only, they're allowed so much. The, the next guy, he's allowed so much. So now you got twice as much. And then the next one comes in and he's allowed some, then you've got three times. I, I, I think it's time for Energy J I to end this thing that it's got going on right now. And I mean, we, we come to these meetings and talk. I remember when we went to Carpenter Road School and they had a great big meeting there. And it was just like every one of us was washed right down the tube.
Yes, sir.
You know, and we walked out of there, we thought, wow, they're gonna do something. They, they did, you don't, it, it's like we're forgotten then. You know, and it, it's like you should have to live in that area for a while. And it lets you use your judgment and you'd be like, I, I, I've been, I got a business there. I've been for fifty five years and I got a good business. But people don't like the smell of the air. They, I don't know, did you remember going to ever go to Midland when it was bad smelling? You go on vacation, you come back and you get off that big airplane at Bishop Airport and you think that you're right back in Midland again. And we, we don't deserve that. I mean, we're here because we want to be. At least work with us as much as you can. I, I very much agree. And I do appreciate you being here, but it, it, it just seems like whatever we do, you don't do anything in noise. And, and, and try to get a hold of somebody, it's like you're lying, you know, and they won't call you back. You know, I mean, it's, it's a shame. I, I think people are really being left out and, and it's like nobody cares anymore, you know? And, and I mean, we respect you for what you do. But at least make for sure that you respect us and what we're breathing. And, and people don't realize that, you know? And, but I, I appreciate everybody, the supporting people that's from Flint and Genesee. I don't even know any of these people, but you can just tell they care. That's why they're here. And, but I'm gonna let you go so you can give them a chance to talk. If they didn't fill out the card, you know, maybe they didn't realize it. But there's people in here that could probably really give you some good answers. Okay, and thank you very much and I appreciate everything.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ho.
Right on.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So Caitlin, we're gonna go to bottom line. Interview, so we have one comment from online. I'm gonna apologize if I mispronounce his last name, but the comment comes from a Mike Boosa. And the comment directly as written says, "The audience keeps talking about the high rate of asthma in the area. This area has one of the highest asthma, asthma rates in the state. You keep talking about regulations. There is a real disconnect. It appears what you are doing doesn't work because if it was correct, all of these people would not get sick when all of these factories are present. What you are doing is not protecting the people." Yeah, thank you very much for that comment. Um, is there anyone else online that would like to make a comment? You can raise your hand or you can put your comment into the chat like Caitlin just read it. Um, while we're waiting for that to happen, unless you see any hands up, okay? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? So let's go to this gentleman right here. Lisa, so if you just wait for Lisa, if you don't mind, and then if you don't mind stating your name for the record.
My name is David Richardson. And I would like for Eagle to lean on that shift place. That's where most of the pollution is coming. I'm just little people, so they, they're not gonna pay any attention. But maybe Eagle can give them the tool down honestly. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. Clayton right here. Clayton, can you, do you mind saying your whole name for the record before you do your comment? Layton right here. Layton, can you, do you mind stating your whole name for the record before you do your comment?
My name's Layton Jefferson, Jr. I reside at G 6190 North Dorad. We've been in our house for 35 years. We've even faded off. We've had to endure smells like this, the smells that we have are getting. But it's not the smell is what you don't see. The chemicals that you, that those, some of the companies burn. I have not totally looked into what it's into powder coating. But I imagine it's a lot of bad chemicals in it. And the workers have to wear hazmat suits. The gentleman from the company owns the company is here present to see how the, this hearing is gonna go. I respect him. He's a person in the job trying to make a living, possibly trying to buy a new yacht. That's the American way. But don't do it on my back and my kids' back and my grandkids' back. That's where my problem comes in. You know, it's not what you smell, it's what you don't smell if you breathe it in. I tried to get somebody in here from the college to show how the life expectancy is. People that live in that area, their lives are gonna be shorter than somebody else lives 50 miles up the road. And that's where my problem comes in. You have all the people that work in General Motors and plants and stuff and spray. I remember some people would come out and they'd come home and blow their nose if they had red cars. They blew red snot out of their nose. And that's what is happening with us. And I don't, I'm here because I don't need everybody behind me to be poisoned by air. The EPA said our plant's water was okay to drink. Well, we see where that went. So the EPA had changed their name to Eagle because they had such a very, did a very bad job. So do we trust any of you that came here? No. The report that you will make for us, do we trust it? No. The asphalt plant, the people on the board got $10,000 a piece to give to the governor's campaign when she was running. Eagle gave some money, not Eagle, but the asphalt plant itself gave some money. So she got around about $60,000 from them. That's what money does. When JR Torch, the guy across the street called on JR Torch, the inspector from Lansing would come about half an hour, 45 minutes later, he'd sit across the street. And every time he came, they knew that he'd recovered. So JR Torch gives somebody some money. Will people in politics take money? Yes, they will. Let them know they will. So when you come here and you sit with us, I don't expect anybody, any, but you go back to your neighborhood, you wouldn't let them put it next door to you. And you would say, well, we can't do anything because we work for the EPA. But you go tell your friends what to do. And that's my problem with this plant. And there's 19, it's 1973, there was a civil law, this civil rights law that's been put up, was out, that said, "These plants are not allowed to be put around a low-income or African-American community or Hispanic. You've allowed them to be put in anyway." So what they say is, well, we're not dealing with the federal. But you're allowing other people to poison us. And then that one thing, I can't give you this time all the time. You didn't bring any black people, but you did with this one time. So what does that tell us?
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else online that wanted to make a comment? Anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment tonight? Mona? Mona, don't feel like you have to stand up. No, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mona Monroe Davis. I'm with a local environmental justice organization called Environmental Transformation Movement. I am glad to see somebody here from Universal Coating. It's rare that we actually see somebody from the companies come to these meetings. And it's, we always, we are here because we care about the community and we'd rather be in relationship with everybody. My concern is not, I don't have an issue with the company. We, my concern is with the health and well-being of the community and the disparities that are happening. So one thing that I've been thinking about is, you know, when the, when Universal, when the, when the factory, Universal Coating was established, were environmental justice considerations factored into the initial permit? How were they factored into the initial permit that allowed the initial sighting? And were they factored into the consideration for the permit to expand for the two additional spray lines? So that's a question. I think Eagle needs to take a moment for any permit requests to look at them with fresh eyes, to consider environmental justice in whatever way is possible, through modeling, through whatever pieces you can as you're looking at multiple sources of pollution in the area in whatever, in whatever way you possibly can within the analysis that you do. I also have been thinking about the 2021 violation notice. And was that considered in the air quality? Excuse me. Was the 2021 violation notice considered in the air quality model for this new permit request? And so how did it change the model? For example, did it change any terms for what air quality cleaning technology should be installed at the factory site in order to add the two additional spray lines? So that would be something to consider. You know, if there's gonna be, the cap on emissions is going to stay the same and there's going to be additional activity happening. And we know that there's gonna be more variability in those emissions. And there has been an instance in the past where we know has exceeded the permit. What protections are gonna be put in place to create a greater buffer and ensure that, that, that the community is protected from that going forward? So that could be air cleaning technologies. There could be something else I'm not thinking of that could be factored into Eagle's review. I have just been thinking about this in terms of the air quality monitoring, but you know, I would ask that you take that comment back and apply it to your whole review process and as expansively as you can because I don't know all the ins and outs of the review process like you do. And then it's come out before and I know that there are limitations within the laws and regulations. But I do want to emphasize again, to the greatest extent possible by law in every aspect possible within the review, please consider cumulative impacts and the grace, to the greatest extent that you can lean on Rule 228 of Michigan's law. Because this is, this is, this is just, it's an issue in this area with multiple facilities. And again, it's not a personal thing against Universal Coatings. It's a concern that we are seeing so many families and especially children, but also elders with asthma, COPD and other health issues that have come and have been, come after these facilities have been built. And so any request for expansion or increasing activity automatically is going to be a concern for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate all those things you brought up. Yeah, right over here, Lisa. Oh, sorry, in the red.
Thank you. My name is Emily Hayes. I'm the Executive Director for Michigan Faith in Action. And as I listen tonight, I'm wondering if one of the things that could be a corrective issue inside of how the plants are inspected is to expand the hours in which those inspections happen. That we know that typically an inspection would probably happen during normal working hours. But from what we've learned this evening, that the, many of those things happen after hours, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning. And that if there was a way in which someone would actually go into the plant to evaluate what was happening at that time, that that could be a better service to our community. And we could get to the bottom of what some of the people have also reported that they've experienced within the living nearby of the community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. I just want to check in. Anything online? Okay. Anyone else in the audience tonight want to make a comment?
Somebody that has kids.
Thank you. If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, so, oh, hold on.
You say the guy that.
Hold on one second. We can't.
Coating is here.
This is because this is the comment period, we can't really respond to questions. But after we close the hearing, then we might have time for some more questions. Okay? Okay, so sorry, it's just a process. So do you have another comment that you'd like to make? Thank you.
This is Bishop Bernie Dell Jefferson again. And the way that you notify the community of what's going on, the hearings and, and, and the what's going on. As we drove around yesterday, we found out many of our community members knew nothing about what was going on. So there should be a mandate that each community member in a mile radius at least get notification of what's going on.
Yep, that's a good comment. Thank you. Any other comments for the record tonight? Caitlin, just want to check in one more time? Okay, thank you. So what I'm gonna do is I have to read a statement that will officially close the hearing for tonight. And then we'll talk about some of the other things that I mentioned earlier. All right. "Thank you so much for taking the time to participate in this meeting tonight. We do really appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on February 15, 2024. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit." So the hearing is not closed. Thank you again for your patience in listening to that. Couple other things that I wanted to go over to give you guys a little bit more information that we talked about earlier. Hopefully I think more. Okay, so we just had some comments from the audience. Thank you for doing that. If you would like to make another comment, Nayira said she wants to make more technical comments. That's completely fine. You can make more than one comment. There's a few different ways that you can do it. You can send us a letter in the mail with your comment. We always kind of talk about this. It can be on a napkin. It does not have to be typed. It can be on the back of your envelope, whatever works for you. So you can send us that in the mail. You can send us an email if you have the ability to do that and to eagleaqdptipubliccomments@michigan.gov. A lot of people just want to call the voicemail and that's also perfectly fine. So that number is 517-284-0900. There's, it doesn't time you out. You just want to say, this is about Universal Coating. I have a comment. This is my name. And then you can leave your comment on the voicemail. All of these ways that you can comment whether you did tonight or not, they all weigh the same. So we're going to look at every single one of them. These ones aren't necessarily, you know, higher than anything that we would get this way. So again, just want to make sure everybody knows February 15th. If you want to get more information, and I know I'm gonna trip myself up here as I did earlier, the paperwork that's out there by Laura and Missy, if you didn't grab one on their way in, feel free to grab it on your way out. It's all also available online if that's easier for you. It's totally up to you who you want to do it. So what would you find there? That proposed project summary is kind of that high level overview of this proposed project. You know, what the company requested, a little bit about our review, but it's more high level. If you want to dig deeper into the rules, the regulations, the review, that's gonna be in that technical fact sheet. That's gonna be a little bit longer. And like I said, it's gonna have kind of the rules listed out in there. The proposed permit terms and conditions. So that's the stuff that Nick talked about where it's like, if this was approved, this is what we're saying the company would have to do to meet the rules and regulations. So remember, once, once that is finalized and even the permit that the company has right now, it is a legal binding document. They have to abide by the limits and the conditions in that permit or they're in violation. So we kind of talked about that earlier. We will post a recording of this meeting. I'm not sure how it's gonna look because this is the first time we've done this kind of a meeting. So hopefully it'll be okay. But either way, we will post that information as well if you want to look back on things. And I had this up earlier, but just in case you didn't get a chance to write this stuff down. For those of you who have comments and concerns and potentially complaints about other facilities in the area or even Universal Coating, you can obviously call, where is he? Matt Carl, he's the inspector. So he would be someone you could call directly. And I apologize, Irene. Irene, right? So Eileen, I'm sorry. So Eileen mentioned after hours. This is the number you're gonna want to call, that 1-800 number. The P's operators operate 24/7. Doesn't mean we'll always be able to get out there in after hours. I just want to, you know, make sure people know that. But that number is available to you to at least let us know that something is going on and you want to find out what it's all about. So that's 1-800-292-4706. So we also have an online complaint form. Again, if you're interested in just doing something from your phone, I can talk to you about how to do that. We didn't put that up on screen because most people like to call. All right, so that brings us to the end of all the formal stuff. Oh, I keep forgetting there's a clock there. 7:43, so we do have a little bit more time. Aki, I think you had a question maybe about something?
If this gentleman that's over here, he's one that owns a universal.
Yeah, he is. And you can, if you guys want to.
Say anything on how you feel about what's going on here, you know, to defend yourself.
Oh, well, it's not, yeah.
But what you're gonna, what your plans are or we're all gonna sit here. We're trying to work out here, but I mean, you gotta be within your requirements, you know, and think about us, you know?
Yep.
I understand that. Do you live in Flint?
Yes, actually I live in Mount Morris. And I moved my facility from Mount Morris over to Energy Drive in 2005. The reason I moved was so that I could continue to grow the business. And consequently, we went from like 30 employees to today we have almost 200. So we have grown very well with the community's help. We have countless employees that live in the area. We were instrumental in helping to get the bus station enclosure at the end of Energy Drive. That was quite a battle, but we got it done. And we appreciate the MTA service for making that happen.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming and listening to everybody's comments and concerns. So yeah, thank you so much for doing that, too.
And I am very happy to talk to anybody anytime. If anybody would like to take, come to my facility and get a guided tour of what we do.
With your, with your employees, have you had any health problems there?
No.
You can say.
None.
So we, he wouldn't really need them to.
My own children literally have been raised in my facility. My own children literally have been raised in my facility. I mean, from the day they came home from the hospital, they've been in my facility.
So you live on Energy Drive?
I actually live in Mount Morris.
Okay.
Uh, block down from my old shop. And the only reason we moved was I ran out of land to be able to expand.
Now, you are in Genesee Township, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I mean, I meet the tax base.
Yeah.
Genesee County, I mean, Genesee Bill is collecting tax from you.
Genesee Township and Genesee County, yes.
So can we, hold on just one second. I'm sorry, I don't interrupt, but I'm gonna go ahead and close the online part so we can just have a discussion here. Okay, so it goes for everybody that's online. We're gonna go ahead and close the meeting officially. We might have a little bit more conversation here. But thank you so much for joining us online. Uh, we really appreciate your ability to do things virtually. So thanks, Caitlin, for doing that. So I'm gonna kind of close the meeting down. It, it sounds like there might be other conversations.